It is Wednesday, May 3rd, 2017, 9 o'clock. And we're in the Senator Hearing Room 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item's always public comment. Nobody has signed up. Did anyone wish to make any public comment? You'll get your chance later, Chad, I know that. All right, then, we do have some presentations, and we'll probably, we'll start with the Senator Economic Development, Oregon Garden Foundation, Third Quarter Report, and Volunteer Recognition of Sue Thompson. Mark Hunter, Developmental Development Director, Oregon Garden Foundation, want to come up here and give you a report, and we'll try to play it by ear and see how this goes.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the time today, and as usual, you know, I say "as usual," but I mean sincerely thank you for everything that the county, the commissioners do in support of the Oregon Garden and the Oregon Garden Foundation. Without your participation, we just wouldn't have a lot of the things that we are able to accomplish out there. My quarterly report is relatively brief. I think you have it in front of you, and if there's any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer them. But some of the things that I just want to point out that we're really excited about is the fact that we've had some really significant major gifts come in in the last month, and I think they're going to have a huge impact on operations and facilities and some of the projects that we have started. I think, I think when I did this the first time, two years ago, I started with a story about a gentleman from Bend who graciously made a donation to the garden and told me his story and his association with the garden. Colonel Winchell Craig is a benefactor to the garden and continues to this day, but his association with the garden was very personal, very heartfelt, and it was the place where he was able to say all the things he needed to say to his wife before she passed on, and has contributed to the garden on her behalf and in her honor many times. And this being my last report on behalf of the Oregon Garden Foundation, I wanted to share another story as I'm leaving, and that was yesterday Naomi and I and one of our volunteers met with one of our longtime members of the Oregon Garden, Joe and Beth Mistrada, and we had a wonderful conversation about their attachment to the garden and how nine years ago, because of a change in venue for wedding, they accidentally stumbled upon the garden, and ever since, they have gone to the resort once a month for the last nine years. And they've also contributed so many times in so many ways to the garden. But over the last few years, they've really gotten a real strong heart for some of the things we're trying to accomplish and made a strong contribution yesterday while we're sitting there to the Conifer Garden and to the future of the Conifer Garden, and we were really excited about those types of things. Those are the types of stories that are really starting to come to the forefront. Those are the changes that I think we've made in the development program over the last two years that are continuing and starting to make a huge difference and an impact going forward. But also, you know, we're here to recognize a volunteer, and I want to kind of throw the mic back to Sam for this, as a longtime board member for the Oregon Garden Foundation. But we want to recognize Sue Thompson, who's served on the board for, I'm not sure how long, five years, and for, she's also a county volunteer. So Sam, if you have a few comments, I know you have a couple of items to present to her, so.
Well, I just set out for a microphone, but I'll have to do it here, perhaps? Yeah, that'll be fine. So Sue, would you come up by Mark so we can visit a little bit? Please.
We honor her and then we put her on the hot seat.
Yeah, put her in the hot seat. Do you have any final statements?
Your last meal?
No, Mark was hitting at it. You've been such a friend of Marion County and stepped up in the assessor's office and did such a great work, and then, I think you're still continuing with BOPDA, is that right? Are you done with that, too?
No, I hope to be invited again. I was this year and then hopefully next year.
Well, you will be invited again, because we need you desperately there, and that's a great service to, again, Marion County, the people of Marion County, and what that does is, I don't know what the correct word, settle disputes on assessments or appraisals. What would you describe it?
How would I describe BOPDA?
Yeah.
It's an opportunity for people to bring their concerns about their tax assessment and their property and other issues to a panel that can hear them with some experience and some background and make decisions that help them out, and it's an educational process for the county to reach out to their citizens and for the citizens to be able to come and talk to the county. And I've considered it a challenge and an honor to be involved in BOPDA. Thank you, Tom.
All right, thank you. And then, of course, your association getting to work with you again at the Oregon Garden's been a pleasure, and we'll miss you very much. Do you have any comments, and if you do or don't?
Oh, Sue, she's just such a wonderful person and great volunteer for Marion County, great former department head of Marion County, and also a great volunteer in the community. Just see you everywhere and just love everything that you do. Thank you so much for all your service.
Yeah, thank you.
So we'll do this without the microphone, but we have a couple of little things for you.
She's got the microphone.
Oh, you do now?
Yeah.
I don't have any more to say.
Is it on?
So I'll meet you down front, and we'll give you a couple items, and take your picture.
You ready to sing?
Yes, we could sing.
Kevin can say something. He's always got something to say.
No. So Sue, the first is a certificate appreciation, which is nice, recognition of five years, assigned by the three commissioners, that's probably, but this is really special, and this was Naomi and the Foundation's gift to you, and if you'll just peer through it, they've taken an Oregon Garden book and included a pretty professional looking, I might say. I wish I would have thought of something nicer to write, but a message from each of us here on, from the board, the Foundation Board, and I hope you enjoy it very much. And if you get to my page, you see I did leave my phone number, so we'll figure things out.
Oh, my goodness.
Isn't that nice?
I am so thrilled with this.
That's sweet.
Thank you, thank you, Naomi, and thank you for everybody who's contributed to this. This is the most beautiful thing I've seen ever, ever. Look at this, what a treasure. Thank you.
You should know all of those photographs are.
I thought they might be. Our wonderful photographer. This is just so, oh goodness.
All right. Let's make sure you try this one. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. But I wish we had something nice for Chad Freeman.
Next.
Maybe, maybe over time.
Mr. Chair, we do. It's good news about the economy.
Okay, there you go. So our next item is Senator Economic Development, a report from SEDCOR, Third Quarter Report, Chad Freeman and Nick Harville. If you would come over, it's good to see you again, as usual.
Good morning, and I thank you for struggling to try to find something nice to say.
I'll start thinking now, take a month or two.
Please, please, not on my behalf. Thanks, once again, as you know, Chad Freeman, President of SEDCOR, and we work with economic development in Marion, Marion, Polk, and Yamhill Counties, but obviously today we're speaking about Marion County. Quite an honor to follow volunteers. I think really one of the things that sets this county aside is the way everybody works together, so congratulations, I think really awesome to see the work of volunteers here. With that, also wanted to, to thank you to the county for your ongoing support of economic development, something that we see across the county, both in your work, in your volunteer, and really just the way the county communicates and works together. Based on that, I also want to pull and do a quick introduction. Christine Thomas has joined SEDCOR to do our marketing communications outreach, great asset, and then hopefully we'll be able to introduce Denny Hool, who's the new Representative for Business Oregon, and maybe next quarter invite him to come speak with us a little bit, just about one of some of the work that the state is doing on economic development, as they've been a group that's a strong partner for us. But a little bit more about the last quarter, and I'll ask Nick to speak about some of the expansion projects, but on a broader sector, I mean, the economy continues to do very well. We're seeing the real estate side of the market strengthen quite a bit. In fact, last, we've talked about low vacancy rates, even down as low as potentially 1% on industrial land, and we're seeing some of the improvements that lead to new buildings that are really, that are coming up for, over the fall, we've had about a half a million square feet under construction of industrial buildings here in Marion County alone, and we're, the fun thing about that is we're also starting to see new spec buildings, those buildings coming up to service the future need, and we're working with many of the folks on our membership side as well, who are seeing work, whether they're building the roofs or actually doing the construction or laying the groundwork. We're able to see that the work that we are doing is not just impacting those companies, but also the supply chain and the growth and the ongoing investment here is having pretty significant impacts, and we're really, it's something that's fun to see as it goes through the process. When we talked a little bit, when we talked the areas of growth, we continue to see, we spoke about the movement in industrial real estate, particularly we've seen some new investment at Mill Creek, Hennington Cold Storage, which kind of a great story, they contacted us last April with a need that they needed to help, and for those that don't know this, they provide cold storage for both food processors as well as the ag community. So we do see that as a strong supply chain play. But last April, we had our initial conversations, and they're looking at opening up their new 200,000 square foot facility on June 1. So you're talking about building a, basically a five acre, very high-tech building from acquisition of the land to planning to building to opening it up in about 14 months, and I think pretty amazing turnaround, both in how quickly they've been able to work, as well as the partnership that's been able to help them do that. So that's the first significant investment in a little while with that over at Mill Creek, but we expect to see, to see more coming out of there as well. So, but they're representative of the other industry we've seen, as I said, real estate transition, you're seeing food processing, a lot of growth in that space as companies continue to grow jobs. Distribution continues to drive the market, and we're seeing a lot of those jobs, and I think distribution jobs are continuing to change as they get more high-scaled, and we're going to see some growth, and that's where we see a lot of the interest. And then manufacturing, and manufacturing use continues to be steady, and we continue to see that across the region. I think maybe Nick can speak a little bit more about some of those projects in particular.
Good morning, Commissioner Nick Harville, Business Retention and Expansion Manager for SEDCOR, cover Marion County. As Chad said, a lot of the manufacturers are expanding. It's almost to a point of being overwhelming. Every community, almost every community in Marion County has a manufacturer in it, and almost every one of them, a lot of them are expanding, new equipment, building expansions, taking on new customers, larger customers, trying to build capacity, and of course, that means they need workforce. You all have heard it over and over again about workforce, but I'm really glad that schools like Mills, the school in Mill City State and others are taking on the charge of training young people with some fundamental skills. The Canyon School District is actually expanding their program from construction next year. They're also going to start including manufacturing with a welding shop and some other capabilities, which is great. And Mount Angel continues to expand their program. We're also doing our BRNE study and surveys. One of my volunteers is here this morning, who's been hoping out in Silverton. Right now, Silverton and Mount Angel are doing their surveys. They hope to be done within the next couple weeks. It's interesting to see that information and some of the things that companies are really in need of for training. But that's all on a volunteer basis, and as Chad said, it's nice to be here in Marion County where a lot of people do volunteer their time and their efforts to help make communities better. There's, even the city of McClay has a small machine shop. Young man started about a year ago with himself. He now has six employees, and he's reached out to other manufacturers, he's doing work for several other manufacturers, and doing really well. I'm kind of proud of him. But even agriculture, it's a little wet, to say the least, but people are starting to get in, get their farm work done, spraying, getting some spraying done, which is good, because that's the main, the biggest industry in the county. And the hazelnut processing plant in Donald is, the Foundation's all poured, and they're starting to really work on that site. So Wilco will be moving their distribution center up to Donald, and probably 50 jobs. But, thank you.
Thanks, look forward to any questions you may have as well.
No questions, I really appreciate the report. It's excellent news, a lot of activity going on, which is really great.
Just, Frank, me, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was at the Mount Angel City Council meeting Tuesday, Monday night, and they were very appreciative of SEDCOR and the BRNE things that are going on up there. I know there's a little bit more work to do, and it was great to have the presentation from Mark last week, to actually see some of the survey results starting to come through. That's what I think I've been asking for and looking for, so I appreciate that, and our community services staff getting that done. So it'll be really interesting to see how the, I noticed the grant is running out, so how is that going to impact staffing in the future? Can you share a little bit about that, Chad? The BRNE grant?
Yeah, so.
Or Make It An America Grant, I guess it's called?
Yeah, so in 2012, SEDCOR, working with the Council of Governments, Insight, and Oregon Manufacturing Extension Partnership filed for and received a federal grant to help us grow and understand manufacturing in the region. Through that, we have been able to expand the SEDCOR's work, particularly with manufacturers in Marion, Polk, and Yamhill Counties. That grant will expire, actually technically expired, September of last year. We've been able to continue that work through July of this, and certainly we've had a great cohort of partners to try to continue to help that work, Marion County, Polk County, Business Oregon, the Council of Governments, I'm sure I'm leaving off some, but just Polk, excuse me, PGE and Pacific Core as well, pulled together to help facilitate that. That grant is expiring, as you said, July 1st. We are internally working for and kind of the next step, how do we continue to build that capacity here, to maintain the capacity that we've got to do that work, and we're partnering with both Polk and Yamhill Counties on trying to continue to maintain that workload and stay at a steady level.
Okay. But the other, I think, just for all of our knowledge, is maybe you can just give us a little update on Mill Creek and where we're at with some of those industrial properties out there?
Absolutely. So again, a little bit of background, Mill Creek in 2004 came out of the legislature, was a publicly held piece of property that provided food for, they actually grew food for the inmates up at Corrections. Since that time, the state, the Department of Administrative Services, and the city have partnered to develop a 600-acre industrial park, and they're really taking the time to develop that, starting with the north end with Home Depot. I think Home Depot moved it in 2009. FedEx, a little further south, moved, had about a 60,000 square foot facility since that time, and, excuse me, and since the time that FedEx was originally there, they're now undergoing their second expansion. There were, at this time last year, there was 190 acres that were shovel-ready for development, currently about, we've got, as I mentioned in initial report, Hennington took about 40 acres of those, and they're building a 200,000 square foot, about a 30 million Phase 1. We now have some ongoing interest in working, have a contract for about 90 acres directly adjacent to Home Depot, and then PAC Trust executed into building spec buildings, has new buildings to the market on 20 acres. So we are, in terms of what was a year ago, what was shovel-ready is almost completely off the market, leaving us with really about 20 acres of shovel-ready land. And then there's a small, excuse me, and then there's one other 19-acre segment directed to the north of the Hennington parcel. Once those projects are just a little bit further, then the state and city will work to continue to develop those parcels further to the south, recognizing there's a little bit of work that can be done. That needs to be done in order to bring those pieces up into a shovel-ready status. That being said, if somebody, we certainly have talked to investors, knowing that we would need to do some work and that they would need to do some work in parallel, but we still think we could turn those around in about 18 months as well, in terms of having somebody on there. So we're ready to react to the market, and after this next stage of investment, I think we'll actually start making some proactive movements on those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chad, probably should just tell you this on the side, but we're getting a little interest in the state on the cord and road interchange ideas that the city and the county have been wanting for a long time, so what I'd like to ask you is to listen to potential builders, customers, et cetera, on their need or desire to have that done, because it could be useful in the not-too-distant future.
Will, and maybe just a follow-up, we'll absolutely continue to, I think that intersection will continue to gain in importance, and we've had that conversation from our end as well with the state, but we continue to see that interest, and I think that will be a selling point, and we'll continue to push that. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, well then, thank you both very much, and continue the good work.
Thank you.
The next is the, our consent calendar, I think it's Commissioner Carlson this one.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll move today's consent calendar under Business Services. Approve recommendations to uphold pay grade for classification number 532, medical billing specialist. Adjust pay grade upward for classifications number 600, information technology director, number 664, computer forensic specialist, and number 666, computer forensics trainee. Under Health, approve amendment number two of the contract for services with IDEA Learning Group to add $8,750 for change order 0916-01 for Health Department Policies and Procedures e-Learning Modules. Approve amendment number 15 of the Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon Health Authority to add $23,716 for reproductive health program. Under Public Works, approve a dedication of right-of-way from foreclosed property, number R37284, along a portion of Fifth Street, Jefferson, and receive hearings officer's decision affirming Planning Director's decision revoking the operating plan for comprehensive plan case number 09-001, Phillips Family Limited Partnership LLC. And under Tax Office, approve a property tax, two property tax refunds, one in the amount of $120,127.17 to GE Capital Corporation, and the other in the amount of $94,267.2 to Kettle Foods, Inc.
I'll second the motion.
All right, motion is seconded to approve the consent calendar just presented. Is there any further discussion? You're not all in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So, first action item is a proclamation. We consider approving a proclamation that designates the week of May 7th to 13, 2017 as National Corrections Professional Appreciation Week in Marion County. Sheriff Jason Myers, Commander Kevin Schultz coming up. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. For the record, Jason Myers, Marion County Sheriff. It's a privilege to be here today with this proclamation designating the week of May 7th through the 13th, 2017, as National Corrections Professionals Appreciation Week. As you know, we have a number of professionals that work out at our jail and transition center that perform an important role of holding inmates and offenders accountable and watching over them as they're in our care and custody. And I know that you've toured once a year with us, you see the facility and the work that's being done firsthand, and you know this is a difficult job that they have, but they do it with integrity and professionalism, and I'm very proud of our team. Turn it over to Kevin to talk a little more about the work that's being done.
Sure, thank you, Sheriff. For the record, my name's Kevin Schultz, I'm the Division Commander for the Marion County Sheriff's Office, signed to the jail, and we're very, very pleased to be here. And historically, Commissioners, you have been very, very supportive, not only of our office, but our division, and then when we recognize our staff here during this one time a year, some of you have come out and actually broke bread with some of our staff, and our staff have really, really appreciated that, and we're looking forward to maybe that happening again and your continued support throughout the years. So as the sheriff mentioned, we are doing some great things out there, and in the world, according to Commander Schultz, if you'll just indulge me a minute, I'd like to think of our business out there kind of like retail, and what I mean by that is for every one person that actually takes the time to make a complaint about something that we've done or we haven't done, or, there's probably dozens of people that actually are very, very satisfied with the services that we're providing, are very, very pleased about something that we've done. And I think last year I brought a couple letters that I had received from individuals that have been arrested and spent time in our facility, and actually have a couple correspondence, so I'd like to take just a brief minute and read to you, that not only exemplifies the work that we're doing, but it's actually the little things like this when we hear this that actually motivates our staff, and it motivates me to come to work every day to work with the great people that the sheriff has just mentioned here. So this one's very, very short, a very short thank you from an individual that was housing our facility, and it says, "I was in a real mess. I just want you all to know, I'm very grateful for your help and working with me, and thank you for washing my clothes." Here's another one that I received here just about a month ago. On January 31st, when I came in, I was out of my mind. The deputies did a fantastic job taking care of me. I came in really insane. They took care of me, and that team rocks hard. They are a team material to include all the deputies. Thank you. So that may seem trivial or insignificant, but like I said, for every, I truly believe for every one person that complains, there's people that feel like this, but they just don't take that time. So it's proud, it makes me proud to get this correspondence, I share this with staff, and it's just a small, small example of the great work that they do. And in regards to Corrections Professionals Recognition, sometimes what gets lost is simultaneously, it is actually Nurse, National Nurse Recognition Week, too, and we can't recognize the team out at the jail without recognizing the outstanding medical team that we have, because most everybody knows the population that we house in the jails, not necessarily a healthy population, and without our nurses, who do a really, really good job addressing their needs, we wouldn't be as successful as we could be. And last but not least, I think sometimes it gets lost about just how dangerous of a job that that is, and if you just look at 2017 alone, just about a week ago, in North Carolina, there was a corrections deputy that was killed in the line of duty, and you don't have to go back further than that, in February in Delaware, where there was another corrections deputy that was killed in the line of duty. And so sometimes in terms of public safety, I think maybe corrections gets lost, and our community really needs to understand that not only are they making a needs to understand that not only are they're making a commitment each and every day to be successful and do some really good things for those individuals that are housed in, in the jail, but they're putting their safety on the line each and every day too. And we certainly appreciate that. So...
Where do you start? I just want to say thank you, first of all, for bringing this forward. We, as Commissioners, have actually an obligation to inspect the jail at least once a year. And so, that means I've done this at least 14 times, probably a few more. Every time we've gone to the jail, it is well-managed, orderly, sparkling clean, except maybe that little area in the front that's getting better. And the, and it's just great to see the, really the teamwork, camaraderie that you see in the, the room where they have all of the TV cameras, the command center, or whatever you call it there, in the kitchen, just the way, the way that people really work together and, and the atmosphere that you've created there. And I know it's difficult to recruit oftentimes for people to serve in those positions because people probably would prefer to be out on the streets or doing things that maybe are a little bit, what do you say, less solitary as, as going into that institution. But as far as an institution is concerned, I can't think of one that is better than the one that we have here in Marion County. And so, I commend the leadership and also commend the people that come to work every day and do that job and do it so well. So, thank you very much for the, for the service of all of the people that serve for Marion County in those positions.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah. So, thank you. Just thanks, Commander. And I know you, you pass that on to everybody. And hopefully we get it. Are you going to schedule us? Have you tried to schedule us in there for a, a dinner with the swing shift or?
We have, we have something really special in regards to meals for next week. I'll send you, I'll send you the, the schedule on the calendar. And boy, we sure welcome you and would, would be glad to have you out there. And...
Well, if there's food, I'm sure we can maybe get another Commissioner out there too.
I was hoping to say pizza right out of that.
No, but I just want to thank you for, when we did tour this, this year, or I guess it was last year when we did our tour, I, I got to snatch one of the rolls out of the kitchen. Of course, that's, that's my favorite thing to observe as a kitchen.
They might want to keep you there.
Being a restaurant guy. And the rolls were really good. The food was really good. But in all seriousness, I know I did, in fact, I see, I'm not going to call him by what he, he goes by, but the guy that gets into trouble out there, I went, did a ride-along with the sergeant and actually got to see the intake process and that whole, you know, from in, out. And the way people were treated and, and just with respect. And it's just amazing, you know. And it's a tough job to be able to do that, to have resistance. And your people just are fantastic. So, this is the least I could do is approve a proclamation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You want to do that? Make a motion?
While you're talking about it.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve a proclamation designating the week of May 7th through the 13th, 2017 as National Correction Professionals Appreciation Week in Marion County.
I'll second the motion.
My just moved and seconded to approve a proclamation designating May 7th, 13th as National Correction Professional Appreciation Week in Marion County. Just one more question. Any other special activities are you planning during the week or anything with employees especially?
Yeah. So, just the meal times is when we'll be recognizing them and we'll send that to you. And they'll have a special meal as well.
Right. Here, here's another thing that I, I've made, made it a point to do is I actually hold back all my county service awards because I like to take this week at the special dinnertime and recognize the service awards for all those that are deserving in front of their peers. So, you know, it's a little bit more special that way than maybe placing something in their mailbox or meeting with them on one-on-one. But we will be doing that during the meal times too.
Wonderful. Any, any long tenures, if I can call them that? Anything 20 and 30 years shows that.
I think we have a couple 20 and at least one 25-year.
That would be long. All right. Let's see. I don't know if we voted, so I'll have to start that. Did we?
No.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We can prove it. So, as we usually do, let's read that proclamation. Commissioner Cameron, if you'd begin.
Sure. In the matter of proclaiming the week of May 7th through the 13th, 2017, National Correction Professionals Recognition Week, proclamation, this matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled meeting of Wednesday, May 3rd, to proclaim the week of May 7th through the 13th as Corrections Professional Recognition Week. Whereas the members of the institution's division of the Marion County Sheriff's Office play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens of Marion County.
And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their corrections professionals, and that members of our Sheriff's Office recognize their duties to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And?
Whereas the men and women of the institution's division of the Marion County Sheriff's Office unceasingly provide a vital public service, therefore, the board ingratitude for the dedicated public service and sacrifice issues the following proclamation. It is hereby proclaimed the Marion County Board of Commissioners that the week of May 7th through May 13th, 2017, shall be designated as Corrections Professionals Recognition Week. And that's dated this date in Salem, Oregon. It's May 3rd, 2017. So, again, thank you and, and thank all them.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Our next item somewhat connected to the jail. Again, we accept the final closeout report on the jail HVAC project. Colleen Coons-Chafens and Larry Tilford, good morning to you.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Colleen Coons-Chafens, Business Services Director. We're here to talk about the design bid build project closeout. By statute, by rule, we should be here to let you know about all the things that happened during that project. And I'll let Larry go and take about all of that because he's, he and his team are responsible for the successful completion of this. But I want to say that without the Sheriff and his department and those two, the logistics of this was very technical, was very cumbersome. And so, thank both the Sheriff and his staff for helping to make this project successful. So, I'll let it go to Larry now.
Thank you, Director. Good morning, everyone. Larry Tilford, Facilities Program Manager for Marion County. And I'm here to present the contract closeout report for the jail HVAC system remediation project that was just completed recently. This project was formed from Dan Wilson's, our previous facilities systems analyst, facility condition assessment of the county assets. And the HVAC system on the jail was identified as one of the highest needs in the county for attention and funding and replacement. We contracted with Solarc Engineering to accomplish that goal. And through that process, they identified five condensing units, six heat pumps, a new air conditioning unit, and five exhaust fans that all needed replacement. And Solarc's expertise and history seemed to reflect that they could look at old equipment and rather than wholesale change all of the components within that system, they could salvage some components that were still viable. And so, that's one of the criteria that we used when we selected them. And that's the way the project went as well. So, while most of the units that were on the roof were replaced because of the weather damage, the units that were internal to the jail that were the subject of a lot of logistics issues were rebuilt. So, initial cost for the project was to be $769,067. And that was identified by Solarc as the, what they believed to be the proposed cost. However, as we've been seeing lately, all of the bids came in well over that amount. So, we had to regroup as a committee and identify and do some value engineering, identify reductions in scope and changes to the plan so that we could fit that back in the budget. But along the line, the budget was increased. So, fortunately, we were able to tackle all of the elements of the project as they were presented. And we received approval for spending $1,028,254 for that work. A design bid build contract was for $1,184,310, all-inclusive. And we paid Hydrotemp Mechanical, which was the contractor on the job, $993,735 as a closeout amount. This was also a prevailing wage project, a BOLI project. So, for those that don't know, government agencies, once a project is over $50,000, are required to pay prevailing wage to all of the contractors and the subs on the job. That all has to be monitored and there's a lot of paperwork and accounting that goes along with it and record-keeping. Lessons learned, this is the tough part. We found some very valuable lessons to, to our department and the program through this process. One of the things that was most, most critical impact to it was that the project manager for Hydrotemp left midway through the project to do a larger project in Portland. And so, constantly from that point in time on, it was difficult to get a hold of him. He was not particularly, not sufficiently responsive to our needs. And had we the opportunity to do it differently, we would change the initial contract with them to make a heavy penalty for that kind of behavior to occur. And we've already spoken with Multinoba County about some process to make that, to make that happen. Some of the things we, we learned that we would like to employ in the future, we want to collect every single agreement and commitment made by and with the contractor and stakeholders in writing. Not to trust anything at all to a verbal agreement. We want to test and retest the equipment installation throughout the process, separate and apart from the commissioning process. We want to make sure that as it's going in, that it's functioning the way it should be, that it's not installed upside down and backwards, which, believe it or not, are some of the things that happen in this process. Ensure that the owner's representative and the architect and engineer are all aggressively acting in Marion County's best interests. And we did not find that to be 100% true in this case. People had the best of intentions, but were not aggressive in taking action for the county. So, we want to improve that. We also would like to perform a physical onsite verification and communicate to all the stakeholders that not all problems are going to be solved. Some of them are restricted by the, the scope of the work based primarily on the budget. And we'd like to negotiate an absolute unequivocal and irrevocable requirement that the major contractor, contractor representatives can't leave the project early under any conditions or transfer responsibility to others unless it's pre-approved by the owners, by the county. So, the conclusion to this is that we have a very successful project. The, the equipment that was at the jail was, was installed in 1984. So, it was all well beyond its useful life. It was controlled by pneumatic systems that were obsolete. You couldn't get, even get parts for them anymore. So, now we have an upgraded system that is more efficient, more effective, and it's controlled digitally so that you can very tightly refine the temperature adjustments and the way the oper, the equipment operates. As a result, we were able to partner with Energy Trust of Oregon to get an incentive rebate for that work. We recovered $68,152.50 from ETO for this project. And we are saving $118,151 annually on the cost of energy from the jail, which equates to a payback period of 8.4 years over the amount of money that was expended for the project. So, we're very pleased with it. And I want to echo on Colleen's appreciation, if the sheriff's staff is still here, for the sheriff's staff. They, they were outstanding in this. And, and as you can imagine, there was, there was constant in and out of the jail. So, going through Sally ports and managing all of that process was very difficult. And they were terrific and very helpful. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for the report. Great report. Just a couple of questions. One is that I know when this all first started to appear, we got some concerns from people there about air quality issues and moisture issues. And I know that there's been some roof construction things. So, how does all of this fit with that, just on a real high level?
So, on a high level, we, we've approached it from three different directions. We replaced the roof, as you, as you may recall, a couple of years ago. We also put a new coating on the outside of all of the CMU block walls of the jail. So, we really have waterproofed the building. So, there's, there's no moisture intrusion any longer. And with this improved airflow, we actually are, we've increased the, the airflow within the envelope considerably. So, there's more air changes per hour and it should be a much healthier environment all the way around.
Great. And we're not getting complaints anymore from staff about air quality then, as far as you know?
I've not heard any.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Sure.
I might just kind of follow up on that because you talk about the, you know, the 8.4-year payback, but it's, but it's also the comfort and the correct operation and temperature and, and moisture you're referring to. So, that's all better. And just one other little comment. When you're going through these lessons learned, I'm kind of thinking, oh, this sounds like a disaster. And then you'll, you end with it's really successful. So, apparently you were able to get through these problems. And I take it for what it's worth, just something to watch for next time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think the reason it was successful is because Larry and his staff really spent an inordinate amount of time making sure that those issues were corrected. It wasn't easy because the contractor was not, shall we say, always reliable.
Responsive, isn't he?
Responsive.
I think Larry made that clear.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
All right.
Trust that verifies is the mantra.
That's right.
All right. So, I will move that we accept the final closeout report on the jail HVAC project.
I'll second the motion.
All right. It's moved and seconded to accept the final report on this, on this project. Any further discussion? Hear none. So, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. And thanks for all your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Final action item is, under Public Works, we review and accept the annual road easement dedication report for 2016. Cindy Schmidt, good morning to you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Excuse me. Again, my name is Cindy Schmidt. I'm the county engineer in our Public Works Department. Public Works is responsible for maintaining and improving our roadway system. And to do that over time, we need to acquire public road right-of-way at various locations through the year to allow us to do these projects. And the board has to accept those dedications for the county, for them to become part of our public road right-of-way inventory. And in 2002, the board executed an order that delegated that approval or acceptance authority to the Director of Public Works, subject to us bringing back to the board an annual report of what we acquired each calendar year. So, the report today is for the calendar year of 2016. And it shows in the exhibit that's attached to the board item that we have accepted 15 easements and right-of-way dedications on the board's behalf in the calendar year of 2016. The total value of those were just below $92,000 and another approximately $1,000 to get the documents recorded. And most of the dedications were related to acquisitions for some of our capital projects. And then we also received right-of-way dedications from certain development actions. And also sometimes occasionally, property owners will offer to dedicate property to the county that's not very useful to them, but it's right adjacent to the roadway. So, Public Works is recommending that the board accept this list of dedications. Be happy to answer any questions you might have about any of them or the process.
Just trying to look over the list here real quick. Seventy-one. Seems like a pretty big deal. Nineteen, almost 1900 square feet at First Street in Washington in Stateon. And so, what will happen there? Do you know off the top of your head or?
Uh, yes. The, in that particular case, it was a parcel that the county had acquired through foreclosure. And that's a fairly busy intersection with a traffic signal. And we don't have a lot of right-of-way there. And we have a long-term need to do some improvements to that corner. There's nothing scheduled immediately, but because we had the property and county ownership, that was the opportunity to dedicate that right-of-way before we surplus that piece of property.
So, just so I know, so you take 1900 square feet, pretty big piece. Is that all the, is that all the entire lot?
No. It, it, it was along both frontages since it is a corner parcel. And it was a little triangle at the corner to accommodate a future signal pole moved back.
Yeah. It'll help me make my turn. But then the, the second one I noticed is a lot of work. And you've been talking about it on, on the St. Louis Road and Railroad Cross. But then the second one I noticed is a lot of work, and you've been talking about it on the St. Louis Road and Railroad Crossing. So that took a lot of adjustments there to get, so must be expanding too. Am I forgetting that?
The project there is to signalize that railroad crossing. And because traffic will now be able to move across that crossing at up to fifty-five miles an hour highway speeds, the crossing required some smoothing out on the approaches for quite a distance. And that takes additional right-of-way to accommodate the fill.
And you were able to get everything you needed. I take it under this wonderful. Okay, that's all I just interested.
And Delaney, all that works going on.
Turner's on there.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right.
I guess it's my motion, right?
Right.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we accept the annual road easement dedication report for two thousand and sixteen.
I'll second the motion.
All right. It's been moved second to review and accept the annual road easement dedication report for two thousand and sixteen. Anything else? Hear anything, all in favor, then say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Our next and final item this morning is a public hearing. I'll open up that public hearing. And it is to consider an application for a mass gathering case, permit, I assume, case number seventeen oh-oh-one Sonnen, Clerk's File five-seven-two-two. Brandon Reich, you're beginning. We'll start with the presentation from our county staff, have some testimony from those in support, and then those in opposition, and end up with staff and questions. So Brandon, if you'd like to begin.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I am Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. The item before you is the application of Rudy Sonnen for a mass gathering permit on exclusive farm use zone property located at one-three-two-oh-six Killiam Loop Northeast, Woodburn. The property is located on the south side of Killiam Loop, approximately twenty-six hundred feet east of Union School Road. Surrounding properties in all directions consist of property being farmed in an EFU zone. The applicant is requesting to conduct a series of small mass gathering events related to horse racing. In two thousand and fifteen, the Sonnens received approval for similar agritourism events, up to four per year. Among the conditions of approval then, where the dust, where that dust suppression take place, a maximum of six hundred persons attend any one event, security be provided, solid waste be disposed of properly, and sales intoxicating liquid receive, liquid receive approval from the OLCC. The approval could be renewed yearly and is renewed for two thousand and sixteen. After the events began taking place in two thousand and sixteen, code enforcement received complaints regarding violations of the conditions of approval. Initially, code enforcement met with Mr. Sonnen to discuss compliance with conditions. When complaints were still received about violations, code enforcement and a representative from the OLCC attended the final event in two thousand and sixteen. Code enforcement noticed a number of violations, the most significant. Dust suppression was not adequate to prevent dust from impacting neighboring properties and roadways. The attendance exceeded the six hundred person limit and reached up to twenty-two hundred people. Solid waste was prevalent on the ground of the event. There is not adequate trash receptacles for disposal of solid waste during the event. Access to the site is via one-lane roadway, which could be inadequate during an emergency event. And lighting was inadequate for security purposes and for participants moving around the property. In December two thousand and sixteen, the Marion County Planning Director did not approve extending Sonnen's permit to hold agritourism events on the property because attendance exceeded the six hundred person limit granted by the land use approval. Subsequently, Mr. Sonnen applied for a mass gathering permit. In this request for a mass gathering permit, the events would take place on June eleventh, July sixteenth, August sixth, and August twenty-seventh, twenty-seventeen. The four events are anticipated to last for approximately nine and a half hours each, a total of thirty-eight hours. Estimated attendance is up to fifteen hundred people per day. Based on this information, the proposed event meets the definition of a small gathering. According to information submitted with the application, sound amplification will be used during the event from noon to nine-thirty P.M. Alcohol will be available, and no fireworks will be used or shown. The mass gathering ordinance requires the applicant to coordinate with various governmental agencies to assure that there are adequate facilities and services available. These agencies include Marion County Public Works, Marion County Sheriff, Environmental Health, Risk Management, and the local fire district, which in this case is Monitor, and for ambulance service, it's Woodburn. Each of these agencies will provide with a copy of the request and given an opportunity to comment on its requirements. Marion County Public Works Department Traffic commented on conditions that should be applied to any permit approved. Marion County Risk Management did not comment on the request, but the provision of evidence of insurance can be made a condition of approval. The Monitor Fire District did not comment on the request, and the applicant provided no evidence of an approved fire protection plan. Based on the information in the record, it is unclear that the applicant would be able to comply with the mass gathering code or that the code could be satisfied through conditions of approval. Marion County Environmental Health commented on conditions that should be applied to any permit approval. However, the Marion County Code Enforcement staff identified at the previous agritourism event on the property a large volume of solid waste present without being disposed of properly. It appears there is not adequate refuse disposal available at the event, creating potentially unhealthy conditions. Based on the information in the record, it is unclear that the applicant will be able to comply with the code or that the mass gathering code could be satisfied through a condition of approval. The applicant does not have a safety plan approved by the Marion County Sheriff's Office. Marion County Sheriff's Office provided information on agritourism event in two thousand and sixteen on the property, which did not meet the conditions of approval. The Sheriff's Office is concerned about emergency access to the site because of the one-lane roadway. Lighting appeared inadequate for security purposes and for participants moving around the property. In addition, the Sheriff's Office responded to numerous fights and alcohol-related events. Based on the information in the record, it is unclear that the applicant will be able to comply with Marion County code or that the mass gathering code could be satisfied through conditions of approval. The applicant proposes a location on the property for serving intoxicating liquor. In two thousand and sixteen, the OLCC attended a similar event held by the applicant of the mass gathering permit. During the site visit to the event in two thousand and sixteen, the OLCC determined the applicant was in violation of their OLCC permit. Based on the information in the record, it is unclear that the applicant will be able to comply with the mass gathering code or the code could be satisfied through conditions of approval. The board has the options to today to, one, close the public hearing, close the record, and approve the mass gathering permit subject to conditions. Two, close the public hearing, close the record, and deny the mass gathering permit. Continue the public hearing to a date certain, leaving the record open. Or four, close the public hearing, leave the record open, and reconvene at a future date to make a decision. Staff recommends the board deny the request based on lack of evidence in the file that the event operator either complies with or will be able to comply with the criteria for issuing a mass gathering permit. With that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, Brandon. We'll talk to you again in a bit. We have Laura. I'm a little unclear. Did you want to speak? Would you then go ahead and come up as county staff?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jeremy Landers. I'm a sergeant with the Enforcement Division of the Sheriff's Office. I've been working with Laura Pecaric regarding this matter from the stance of the Sheriff's Office. As far as my appearance today, I was asked by Commander Eric Lad from the Enforcement Division to provide testimony with regards to the mass gathering permit Mr. Sonnen has applied for. And we appreciate the opportunity to provide testimony on our behalf. So as far as my role, I was the night shift supervisor for the Sheriff's Office on patrol during three of the agritourism events that occurred in two thousand and sixteen. The one on June twelfth, July third, and July twenty-fourth. And I also oversaw the acting supervisor that was on duty during the August fourteenth event. As far as our response to those, while providing law enforcement services to the entire county, we received an excessive amount of calls, having to respond to those events on Mr. Sonnen's property, which wound up resulting in putting a strain on our services to be able to provide to the rest of the county. The first incident on June twelfth, it led deputies to respond to two separate assaults on the premises. Both resulted in arrests there at the site. There was a third assault that was a block away, which involved people who had just left the event and involved a report of shots having possibly been fired and a possible attempted stabbing as well. Those regarding Sheriff's Office Case one-six dash one-one-three-zero-six. Following this first event, where we were responding, I reached out to Sergeant Todd Oakland, our traffic safety team supervisor, to have a overtime DUI patrol car assigned to that area on July third so we'd have additional support in the area while they're holding that next event. For the July third event, our patrol received calls involving noise complaints and trespassing issues at the event. The trespassing issue is reported by onsite security regarding five people who are refusing to leave the premises for them. When we arrived at the scene, we noticed there are approximately five hundred cars in the parking area at the event, causing us concern as far as just the sheer number of people in that venue. While attempting to assist security with a trespassing issue, we wound up in an incident where there were multiple fights breaking out around us. I would estimate probably at least four to five separate fights as we're trying to deal with the initial issue that we addressed when we responded. As a result of that, we wound up having to call Woodburn Police to come and assist, which resulted in at least three of our patrol cars being there, as well as three of Woodburn Police's patrol cars being there for in excess of thirty minutes, emergency lights activated, and helping security to basically clear the event and wait till the premises was evacuated or people were able to leave to make sure we're able to maintain control. The concern with this is due to the size of the crowd. We weren't able to make an arrest because of the disturbances because we were more concerned with just simply trying to restore order, to get people separated, and to dissipate that crowd. The onsite security clearly didn't have the capacity to try and control that crowd that was acting in that dynamic. Following this event on July third, I spoke with Laura Pecaric of the Code Enforcement, Sergeant Jason Hickam, our Community Response Unit Supervisor, Tara Matthews from OLCC. And they wound up having meetings with Mr. Sonnen, as well as his event manager and security coordinator, to try and work on mitigating some of these issues to get them back to where we could view it as a safe event. On the other side of that, I wound up working with our traffic safety team, and we wound up having to implement a traffic saturation operation, bringing in four deputies on overtime to work that area specifically just to ensure we'd have enough resources to be able to deal with the event issues that we'd already been experiencing. So with those plans in place on that next event, July twenty-fourth, during that event, we received at least two calls from security. One was a trespassing issue. Another was a report of two males attempting to incite a riot at the event. During the traffic saturation operation where we had those other resources, there were also multiple alcohol-related offenses discovered, and they were taking enforcement actions as well. For the August fourteenth event, where I had an acting supervisor working on my behalf, they wound up having to respond to multiple instances out at the property. The information that we received is that there are both disturbances and alcohol-related issues. The attendance at that event being estimated at least twenty-two hundred people. Just as a comparison of what we're trying to control with that group, that's larger than eight of the incorporated cities in Marion County. So we're dealing with a very substantial amount of people. During my personal experience as far as responding to the event location, some of the concerns that I had specifically had to do with the emergency vehicle access to that property being a single-lane roadway into the first gate. Once you get to that first gate on the property, there are two routes that drive down into a recessed area, a bowl, if you will, where this event's being held. Once you actually get down into that area where you go beyond a second gate, they actually did a fairly good job of having vehicles parked appropriately and having good access once you're inside the event. But as you're trying to deal with the traffic that's coming and going from the event, there's a lot of difficulty that comes into play for us trying to get in there. While on scene, I had contact with the head of security there multiple times, Mr. Jose Lorenzano. One of the things that I noticed is each time I was talking to Mr. Lorenzano, almost every time he would have to leave what we were talking about and run back into the event to help address another issue because there was so much going on at one time. We've reached out to Woodburn Fire Chief Paul Iverson to get their information. They did wind up having to respond to this location also during the course of these due to a medical call where a rider had fallen from a horse. One of the comments that he'd made is that access was marginal for them to be able to get their apparatus in there. And then on top of that, they wound up with issues of attempting to actually locate the patient because there's very little continuity as far as that communication chain of where they needed to go to be able to help render aid. So in reviewing the information for the two thousand and seventeen plan, there's very minimal information that's been given to the Sheriff's Office as far as what their plan is as far as public safety goes. So with that being the case, there's just simply not enough detail for the Sheriff's Office to assess if it would be a safe event to continue in two thousand and seventeen at this point. So at this point, there isn't an approved safety plan that's been submitted to the Sheriff's Office. Without that comprehensive plan for these events, I think that we've got valid health and safety concerns for the public that are attending there to make sure that we're able to have a safer event for them to be there. At this point, I'll go ahead and defer to Laura. That way she can give information about what her contacts and investigation regarding this has been.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Laura Pecaric, Code Enforcement Officer for Marion County. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning to provide testimony regarding the proposal, proposed mass gathering. Code enforcement has concerns that the mass gathering events cannot meet the criteria for approval because of the issues at four similar agritourism events previously held on the property. At the first two of the four past events, there were several nine-one-one calls for service. While at the property, deputies had concerns about observed behavior and their probable relation to alcohol consumption. These concerns were documented in reports and passed on to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. Based on the issues at the first two events, meetings were held with Mr. Sonnen, Mr. Sonnen's event manager, Manuel Villanova Cachola, and the security provider, Jose Lorenz, Lorenzana, before the next events were to take place on the property. At the meetings, Mr. Sonnen agreed to alcohol and safety plans with OLCC and the Sheriff's Office. The third event brought additional criminal issues and civil complaints, and additional meeting was held. Because of these ongoing issues and my previous experience with events at the property, I joined Chris Nolte from OLCC at the August fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen event, the fourth and final in a series of events last year, to observe how the event and alcohol service was being managed. Upon arriving at the event, I observed the dust, the dust from vehicles passing other vehicles, and no dust control on the property where the vehicles moved from the gravel roadway in Killiam Loop onto the dirt lane. According to the neighbor, the road had not been lignin, had not had lignin applied since before the second event. The dust created by large volumes of vehicles coming onto and off of the property simultaneously is not only a nuisance for the neighbors, it's also, it also presents safety concerns for first responders. My first observation and concern on the property was for this, this is as I went on to the property for the event on the sixteenth, was for the single entrance into and out of the event. The entrance was also the exit as the rest of the property was fenced. This creates a concern for the safe entrance and exit to and from the event and the ability for emergency responders to enter or exit the event in a timely and safe manner. Secondly, there was a vast difference between where the events were located in years prior and the current event location. The current location does not match the approved site plan found in Conditional Use twelve oh-two-eight. The natural topography of the new location presented issues that should have been addressed in a new site and safety plan proposed before the events took place. It is a lower area. It's farther down, and it's a lot further to get up to the top to Killiam Loop if there was an emergency. During my time on the property, I could not locate any water trucks in the area. During my time on the property, I could not locate any water trucks in the area, no visible fire suppression equipment, or systems available in case of a fire. These events were located in the bottom of a hill in a grass farm field. Butte Creek does border the property on the entire east side, but there was no visible water pumps or even irrigation systems. And that day that I was out there, it was 91 degrees, and it had, we'd had that long heat spell, heat span during the summer last year. During my time on the property, it became obvious that the number of security was not adequate for the number of event participants and patrons. There were several issues that arose where OLCC and I had to find security and bring the issues to their attention. When we asked, we were given the count of 1,500 patrons at 5:30, that was about a half an hour after I arrived at 5 o'clock, and the final count for the day was 2,200. This is almost four times the approved number of 600 patrons as listed in the agritourism conditions. There was a lack of trash receptacles where the patrons could dispose of their plastic beer cups and food containers. I noted only one trash can on the rider's side of the track and one trash can located near the food truck area. There were, I should say this, there was beer trailers on both sides of the racetrack. One on the rider's side of the racetrack where the people were getting prepared to do the race, and on the other side were the event people, where most of the event people were on the other side, or the patrons. This created a large accumulation of alcohol cups and general food service trash dumped on the ground. The evening lighting, consisting of two stadium type lights, one sat at the back of the event on the event side of the racetrack, that means where the patrons were, and the other was on the west side of the dance floor behind the vendor trailers. There was no lighting on the horse and rider's side of the racetrack where one of the beer trailers was located. It was impossible to see people's wristbands and if they were visibly intoxicated. The lighting was inadequate and created problems for people trying to get around. According to the conditions set in CU 15-006, "The hours of operation, including setup and dismantling, shall not commence before 11:30 a.m. or extend beyond 8:30 p.m." A check of the calls for service through 911 confirmed that every event ran over the evening timeline by at least two hours, and I know that was the case for the day that I was there.
Questions or comment?
Mr. Sheriff, I may? Laura, you mentioned no fire suppression equipment. Was that part of the conditional use, that there was fire suppression equipment on the location?
I don't believe that was in the agritourism conditions. I don't know that there were any conditions that actually spoke to that. However, it was 91 degrees and there were 2,200 people onsite. It seemed like the logical thing to do.
But it wasn't a requirement of the conditional use?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you. We have three people signed up to testify in support, and first is Rudy Sonnen. So if you'd come up here and give your name and address, then go ahead and begin.
My name's Rudy Sonnen. I live at 13206 Killiam Loop, Woodburn, Oregon. I am the one that made an application for a small mass gathering permit. The reason that I'm seeking a small mass gathering permit is because in the past years we have had a agritourism event, and the agritourism event that we held were to promote the farm, and I basically run a boarding pasture situation for horses, and we cut some hay. We've been able to sell out of hay the last few years, but that's been pretty easy in Oregon, because there's a big demand for hay. But the stables have been full all the time, too. This family-friendly event that we were putting on has really turned into a community event. I wouldn't want to say we rivaled the Tulip Festival, because I see the cars backed up on 211 headed out to the Tulip Festival from our place right off the deck every weekend. But the event has grown. People have a lot of interest in the program we're putting on, and it is a family-friendly I'd just like to make up, you know, some comments, and things might kind of wander a little bit here. We applied for the mass gathering permit, and as, the approval process in Marion County is kind of a flexible thing. There aren't any set deals, you've got to do this, and you've got to do that. I made four trips to the Woodburn Fire Department, and rather than go to Monitor, I went to Woodburn. I turned in my material, I talked with Joel Stein at the Fire Department, we worked out quite a comprehensive program. It never got to Brandon Ritchie. I made three trips to the Marion County Sheriff's Office. Laura finally called me two weeks ago. There was no coordination or cooperation with those two Marion County affiliates. One of the things you had to do is contact the OLCC, and the OLCC's, oh, come back to us at the end of this deal, we're not going to do anything between. But I got response from the other agencies I was to contact, and they got back to planning. This kind of left a hole in maybe what Brandon had to work with, because he really didn't get our planning thing, and the Sheriff's Office had absolutely no interest in any kind of communication. And I think a lot of this may have to do with observations that Laura cited, and I just, I want to go into those before I continue on. Laura says she observed dust on the road. Okay, we're dealing with Killiam Loop, which is a Marion County road, a single-traffic road. When I moved on to the place 12, 14 years ago, the road looked a little different than it does now. Marion County took care of it a little different. Public Works graded it differently. They actually graded the shoulder of the road in so that there was a sloping shoulder. If you go out there today and you take a look at it, they've just run the grader up and down the road, and they've created a ledge on the side of the road. In the winter, when it rains, there'll actually be water running down the road, because the shoulder isn't maintained adequately. When cars drive on the road, of course, they kick dust out, or dirt and dust and rocks onto the shoulder of the road. The only area of the road that we could actually put dust suppression on was the part that was graded. So of course, you know, it is a road where cars can pass, but most people give a little more room and get out into shoulder. Well, there's rocks and dust and dirt out there, and it can create some dust when it gets out there. But on an overall basis, since we put dust suppression on the road, the neighbors out there, some of you who are berry growers, have a pretty dust-free environment during the whole summer, and they're not getting dust on the blueberries, they're not getting dust on the boysenberries, and they're not getting dust in their homes. So on a whole, over the average of the whole thing, our dust suppression does work, and works for the community during the whole year. Laura says that we have a traffic control problem, and what she observed, along with some of her observations I take in question, when you enter our property and come into it, there's a 20-foot gate there. Right next to it, on the other side, there are two double 20-foot gates that open up, and there's an exit that goes right out. So there is an entrance and an exit. Now, I'll admit that the roadway that is in there isn't much of a roadway. It's a pasture. I mean, people drive on it, so they see a road, but there's a road there, there's a road here, there's another one right there. There's plenty of area for movement, people can pass. I don't see the congestion that we're talking about. Now we talk about Laura's observation. The area that we have down there where, you know, we may have a problem with fire, we think we've got that under control. We mow it. We also irrigate out of Butte Creek. If Laura would have observed, there's a line that ran the length of the racetrack. We water that racetrack so that there isn't any dust coming up during the event. Before that, we also water the area where the spectators are. They're on green grass, which minimizes any fire thing. Now, could we fight a fire with the water we've got? Probably, if we had a fire there, or if there was a car fire, due to the distance that the Fire Department is from us, we would have it put out, either from the water we have available, or from the fire extinguishers that we have had on hand and that we will have on hand. We're having fire extinguishers at all of the vendors, fire extinguishers in the first aid, fire extinguishers at the temporary stage we have, and a fire extinguisher in the tiffet booth. So we're pretty well covered as far as a problem in the case of a fire, but basically the chances of a fire there are pretty limited. There's been a lot of question raised about, I guess you'd say, beer cups that are left over. We have had adequate garbage cans to take care of the beer cups. Maybe we hadn't been quite as timely as getting them picked up. However, the following morning, by noon, the place is completely clean. Everything is picked up and has been hauled to Marion County. The mass gathering permit that we've applied for, we applied for 1,000 to 1,500 people. Joel Stein said, "Well, you should apply for the maximum amount. You're providing support in security, in toilets, in everything else that you're doing. We shouldn't just limit it there, so that if you do run over, you wouldn't have a problem." So I think that's probably a consideration. We don't expect to get, you know, over 1,500 people. The event that they're all talking about that was so big, there were 1,600 people. And it was the last event of the year, and like I said, it's become a community event, and it is kind of building. There's a lot of interest in the community, in the type of event that we're sponsoring. We will furnish an insurance certificate, you know, naming Marion County, and I visited with the lady that handles the security, and she said, "Yeah, all we need is a certificate." She said, "It's just like the Marion County Fair." She says, "I don't actually get a copy of the insurance in my hand, in some cases, still after the fair's over." I think that the fire protection is pretty well covered. I'd just like to explain a little bit on why I went to Marion County's Woodburn Station as opposed to Monitor. Killiam Loop, if you run right down the middle of it, on the north side, you're in Woodburn. On the south side, you're in Monitor. But Monitor's way on out here, and Woodburn's, you know, kind of right here. So right at the gate where you go into the event, on the north side of that gate, we're in Woodburn, on the south side, we're in Monitor Fire District. So they're awful close there, and Woodburn can provide more and quicker services. People are going to call Woodburn as opposed to Monitor, and if we have an emergency where we need medical help, it would be Woodburn that would respond. So that's a little bit of reason why there's some confusion on who and why might respond for fire protection. State Health rules, under the State Health Rules for Food Services and for Medical Services, they have conformed that, you know, we meet the criteria to handle that situation. Our safety plan, which is the big kicker that Marion County Sheriff's Office is talking about, I feel like they've been on the outside of the loop intentionally. We're more than willing to work with them. We're more than willing to do whatever, you know, whatever's asked in the way of providing safety for the people that we would have come to the thing. Our parking and traffic control is outlined in a separate plan, sent to Public Works. The hours of operation, you know, are kind of listed vaguely from 12 o'clock to 9:30. We all know that the longest day of the year is June 22nd, more or less. By the time you get out to August, the days are actually getting shorter. We're still in warmer weather, but the days are getting shorter. So when Laura did visit the place, and it was a little dark, you know, by her estimates, this was one of the times when we were actually during one of the shorter times as far as daylight goes for the events we were putting on. I think that we have provided good security in preserving order for the safety of our Our parking is adequate, provides fire lanes, provides ingress and egress to the place without restrictions. Yes, we do have some restrictive points, because we're checking vehicles for alcohol, so that they can't bring alcohol in. We're also checking vehicles and patrons, so that they aren't bringing weapons in. I never heard of an instance where there was a gunshot on any of the events we put I guess the last thing that we might want to talk about is the accommodations that we're doing for attendance at the Beer Garden. We have had an event where we had an open family event. People could buy beer. We put a wristband on them for identification. They couldn't get a wristband unless they proved they were 21. They couldn't buy a beer unless they had a wristband, but they were 21. But they could wander through the event. Our proposal this year is to change the event and actually put in a beer garden. It would have an entrance, and it would have an exit, they would both be guarded, they would still be banded, but nobody, and that would be so that, might make it a little easier so they can get back into the beer garden. But nobody's going to be able to leave the beer garden with beer. They're going to be in a confined area. Both of our beer trailers would be in that area. So our situation's going to be a little differently. We think that security-wise and crowd control-wise and safety-wise, we would be better able to handle the situation. to handle the situation. Now, one of the things that I think maybe causes a little confusion, when security gets in a problem with something that they can't handle, like somebody who's trespassing or somebody who starts a fight, I think they're required to call Marion County Sheriff's. So they, in fact, do come out and help them with a situation that maybe got out of hand. I think for the, you know, for the most part, we would have adequate security to cover the event. We would have certainly liked a little cooperation from the Marion County Sheriff's Office in planning this event. Maybe they're too busy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. There was two others, and I think they're up there with you.
My name is Jessica.
Introduce yourself, and then go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Jessica Villanueva. I assist with some of the planning of the.
I'm barely able to hear you. Just pull it real close to you, if you could. You can move it.
No.
There you go.
I am Jessica Villanueva. I am Manuel Villanueva's daughter, and I assist with some of the planning of the events. I am here to further translate anything that he'd like to say, just to have it all in the clear.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Manuel Villanueva, and I've returned from Woodburn for three years. One eighty, Whit Chris, Cor, Woodburn, Oregon. And I've worked with Rudy, what are four, last four, five years, with these kind of events. And as you say, how my daughter here, because my English is not pretty clear.
So we started off these events as a small family gathering, and they've grown, been growing by the years, because they've been reaching popularity. We have people coming from Washington, from Idaho, from California, further down Oregon, Menfore, Eugene.
We started off our first event with 300 people attending.
We did not expect this many people to come to our last event, so we were not, we were not expecting this many people, so further down we would. We now have a number of how much people we should expect. We have a count that it was 1,600 people who attended our last event. This is why me and Rudy got together, and we are now planning to apply for a permit that's going to allow us more people. In a letter we got sent from Laura, and I think the Sheriff's Department, it stated about the trash cans. She said she saw two trash cans, when in fact, we have, how many? 25 trash cans all over the place. We do have people picking up trash, but like we said, we didn't expect this many people our last event, so we were not fast enough in picking up all this trash that we should have been doing. Laura stated that she did not see free water, and it was a very hot day. In fact, we do have a lot of free water for anyone who needs it. We have a lot for our staff. We have, at the entrance, we have a cooler. We have one behind the stage. We have one near the beer, and we have one in a tent. She said, "I agree that Laura went to go inspect our event. I just think she was making the right questions to the wrong people." I would have liked for her to ask me these questions, so I can give her exact numbers and exact answers. She says that she only saw me once at the beginning of the event, and another time at the end of the event, when I was closing down. I saw her more than four times. Her and a guy from OCC. We are here to fix everything that they saw unfit, and we want to fix all the problems so that we could continue having our events. We are willing to make agreements and plan meetings to have everything be safe. We are here because we do want to make everything right. We do want to keep our events safe. And we don't want to violate any rules. We want to work together and work right with your terms and conditions. Thank you.
All right. So, Mr. Sonnen, just so you know, there's two sources of opposition testimony. I'll give you a chance afterwards to respond real quickly if you'd like to, but for now, I'll listen to those people. Now, the first was a written correspondence from Janice Butch. Make sure that that's in the record, anyway. And the one with, that would like to testify this morning is Robert, and I can't quite read it, Tool Towel.
Uh, Tool, sir.
Anyway, if you'd come up, introduce yourself and go ahead and give your testimony.
Thank you. My name is Robert Tool. Good morning, Commissioners. I live at 13333 Killiam Loop Road. I have some comments to make about the event, that it's been very disturbing for my family. I raise cattle, and I'm on the main road going to the Sonnen property. This event has never been a small event from the very beginning. It's been 600-plus since this has started. I feel very offended when I hear the family-oriented event coming from the Sonnens, be it with the activities that go on. The first event they had, my wife and I had a family gathering, and we had a starter's cabaret bus go straight up to the event. And what that was, was a vanload of girls that, you know, what can I say, they're dancers. They left that part out of the family-oriented event, which is, you know, that's not the way I was raised. I'm an eight-year military veteran, two honorable discharges. I got recalled to Desert Storm. My dream was to buy a farm out in the country and raise cattle when I got back. I'll give you my notes. We've lived at our farm for 15 years, and what goes on during the event is, it's basically a one-lane road up to the Sonnen's property, to this gate. When people get impatient at trying to get there, because there is quite a line to get to the event, it goes all the way down the gravel road and all the way to cross the front of my property. I own the 12 acres there on the paved end. What happens, basically, we have children in the neighborhood, we have runners in the neighborhood, we have walkers in the neighborhood. You know, we have animals, dogs, cats, just like any other neighborhood. It is EFU, but this is a neighborhood. It's not the Oregon State Fairgrounds. They have venues for this application that they're asking for. The noise actually starts way before the event day. It usually, the setup starts two days prior. The vanloads of trucks and porta-potties and Budweiser beer trucks, and the racing back and forth to this property. There are probably, I can't confirm fireworks on the Sonnen's property, but as people are waiting to go to the event, they have zero problem with lighting fireworks. They have zero problems yelling back and forth and passing cars on basically a one-lane road. And, you know, it's quite hazardous. I literally take off work the days that these events go on, because my wife does not feel safe whatsoever. She actually locks the gates. The litter, I bet you a whole bunch of money, he's right. He probably has his property cleaned up by 12:00 the next day. What he doesn't have cleaned up is Pudding River Road, all the bottles, beer bottles, wine bottles, champagne bottles, all the cardboard containers, all the way down Killiam Loop Road and on the way to event, because that beer that they're drinking in the cars while they're waiting is a lot less expensive than when they get into the event. None of the roads are cleaned up. I clean them up 100%, and it takes me several hours to clean these up. At the last event, my wife and I were out front. I was pouring some concrete for a new sidewalk, and I heard a man screaming out at my gate. And my wife's looking at me, asking me, "What in the world is going on?" And we, I go over to the gate. There's a man being beat up by two gentlemen. One gentleman had a weapon, and I'm not going to say what it was, because I'm hoping Marion County can catch the guy, but had repeatedly stabbed the guy. The guy was covered in blood. I had to jump over my locked gate and get the fight broken up. Two guys beating up a guy and one girl. They fled and jumped in their car. We called Marion County. They came out. They investigated this for, I'd say, probably an hour and a half, two hours. I gave them the weapon. I gave them the gentleman's money that had blood on it. So Marion County has these items, and they have what else fell out of his wallet that I gave to the police officers that day. This gentleman eventually left. Somebody gave him a ride, and according to the Marion County Sheriff told me, he ended up at Safeway, and he doesn't know where that gentleman went from that point. These are the kinds of things that this event is bringing to my neighborhood. It's very disturbing. There was a shooting that same day, right out in front of my house, and Marion County was called for that. And Mr. Sonnen's probably correct. He probably didn't know about a shooting, because there's zero security down on Killiam Loop Road. There's zero traffic flow, except for when you get to his gate on his property only. So down below where all this has taken place, and we've had several fights, we've had two wrecks, and then what happens is, they get the people out of there before Marion County can arrive, because there's drinking involved, and they don't want their friends or the patrons of the event to get in into any trouble with Marion County, with the police department. So, the day of that stabbing, the police officer asked me, "How many cars do I think are up there?" I said, "Sir, I don't know. I've been told not to go up there, and so I don't." But I told him, "If there's only the two of you, I don't recommend you two go up there, because I don't think it's safe for you. I know there's only so many of you." Well, God bless the officer. He went up there with his partner, and they went up and over the hill, and we couldn't really see what was going on. But not long after that, a four-wheel-drive pickup sped around the traffic that was there, kind of went sideways, and went through Sonnen's fence. Then he backed up, and he took off towards Monitor, out to Union School Road. If you don't mind, I like, I can give you the picture of the fence that he went through. And I'll just set it right here, if that's okay. That's the actual fence that the gentleman went through that day. This is what we've been living with of all these events that are taking place. I really believe there's a proper facility for these events. It's called the Oregon State Fairgrounds. It's called Clackamas County Fairgrounds, Malala Fairgrounds. Not in a neighborhood full of children, cattle, EFU. This doesn't bring anything to our neighborhood whatsoever. That's good. The dust cloud never ends. It gets to a point where you can't see, it's about 200 yards from my house to their house. It gets to a point where you can't see across the field, and it's going on all day. And so all of our cars, our house, all our belongings, everything is covered in dust. It's like Mount St. Helens hit again. It's absolutely ridiculous. I do have some concerns. I'm looking under Section 19 of the ordinance of 1230 for Marion County. It clearly states that you cannot break state or federal law and receive this permit. Now, I'm not an attorney. Fairly simple, man. But they have a marijuana grow facility on the premises in several buildings. I've not heard that brought up here yet. Within 100 yards of that facility, in the Sonnen's house, is a licensed daycare facility where children are being taken care of. Now, I realize, in the state of Oregon, marijuana is legal, but federally, it is not. I just believe just that alone disqualifies them to receive this ordinance, and it's under Section 19. Last but not least is this event is driving down my property value. The best months in the world, if I wanted to sell my farm, which I don't plan on, are the months that they're having this event. And there's no way in the world that someone's going to look at buying my place when they see the circus that's going on, and the amount of cars and everything else that's going on. Again, I have to take those days off work, just like right now. I'm not at work. I should be earning money for my family, but I'm here. We have to worry about the damage to our property and our physical welfare with these people before and after event. I think Marion County Sheriff's have better ways to serve our community than policing this event. With all due respect, I'm requesting that you deny this event.
All righty. Questions or comments?
Robert, thank you just for your testimony and being here, and it's important. And I know when you take time off work, but it's important that you're here and be able to share your thoughts. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Sonnen, did you want a chance to respond at all? You don't have to. I just want to offer you that if you do.
You said there's a letter to you?
A letter from Janice Butch.
In regard to the traffic that Bob saw there by his place, he didn't see that in the last event. There were no cars backed up past his place. He didn't see that in the event before that. There were no cars backed up across his place. He didn't see that in the event before that. There were no cars backed up across his place. In the very first event of the year, there were cars backed up, because at that point, we had the ticket gate at the entrance where you come onto our place, but we saw cars backing up. So we actually moved the ticket event about 150 yards inside of our property line. You go through the gate, all the cars are now backing up on our property. There's very rarely more than one or two cars trying to get across to get into our property, and once they're there, it's a pretty free flow. So there's no backup of cars in front of Bob's place now. We've made an adjustment on that. I would just like to point out that, basically, Bob's talking about dust floating around and not seeing it. If that road was not treated, there'd be dust all year long floating around and going on his house. But he's fortunate enough that he lives on the south side of the road, primarily have a prevailing north wind during the summertime, so he probably doesn't catch as much dust as other people on the road. One of the problems that we've had in surfacing the road and in keeping it has been that we haven't had cooperation from the neighbors. I'd like to, I'd like to just put some pictures in here of Butch's watering the road. Now, we're almost against the law to run your irrigation on a public road. You can actually go back and make the farmer wash your rig, or take it someplace and get it washed.
Yeah, this hasn't anything to do with it. I don't.
Yeah, if they were either intentionally watering the road so that we didn't have the dust suppression, or their comment on being great farmers is one or the other. I'm saying it's an intentional, intentional thing.
All right. Anything else? All right, thank you. So Brandon, Laura, and Jeremy, would you make yourself available, please? I shouldn't let Joe swing out of this without being involved, but it seems like he is.
He's going to go.
Yeah.
Nothing to do with the records.
All right, any final comments from any of you that you'd like to say? Otherwise, we'll just start with our deliberations.
I wanted to address the marijuana issue, and I also wanted to just kind of point out the process a little, because this is different than a land use. If the board wanted me to kind of walk through how the mass gathering is, the approval criteria is slightly different than a land use case. I'd be glad to do that.
You can do it quickly.
I can. The medical marijuana, the marijuana growers, planning staff understands it's on an adjacent property, and it's medical marijuana, and so it doesn't pertain, because it's an adjacent property.
Has all the permits or whatever they need to grow marijuana? How do they distinguish that?
It's in the EFU zone, and there's no permitting required. It's permitted outright subject to certain standards.
How?
It's regulated by the Oregon.
I know, but that's another.
How do we know it's going? Never mind.
Yeah, how do you know where it's going? That's my question. That's another day.
That's the whole issue, medical marijuana.
All right. Go ahead, Brandon.
So this is not a land use case. It's a decision the board makes under county code. So briefly, the burden is on the applicant to provide evidence that they meet the criteria in the code. And I, as staff, I did provide examples of past fire suppression plans, safety plans to the applicant, so they have the context, so they have an idea of how to provide this information. The board does not have to, and perhaps legal counsel can correct me if I'm wrong, but cannot decide whether or not the information here would meet a fire suppression, or meet a fire plan, or meet a safety plan. The role for the board and the county is different, is to confirm that the applicant has had that discussion and has approved fire or safety plan. There's two types of approvals then that the board can give. The board can decide that, yes, they have met the requirements in code, they do have the approved signed safety plans provided, or they're able to meet those, they're able to be conditioned to meet those requirements that are in the code. There's also two types of denials that the board can give. One type of denial is they have not met the criteria in the code, and then they'd be able to come back in the future and attempt again to meet the criteria that are in the code. There's a second type of denial, because they exceeded the 750 person, they were approved for 600. The board could find that they held a mass gathering last year, last, end of last August, and they held that mass gathering without a permit, and the mass gathering code provides that if you hold a mass gathering without a permit, then in the future, you can't hold any more mass gatherings. So if the board entertained a denial, there's two types. One, that they have not met the conditions in this case, in this request, and they can come back again and apply in the future. The second would be that they've already held a mass gathering in violation of the code, and they're not able to come back in the future. So that's just a brief outline of some of the decisions, and they're slightly different than you would in a land use case.
All right, thank you. So where would we like to go? You'd like me to start, or anybody else? Go ahead. Well, mine are pretty simple. It looks like there's been enough violations of agreements and conditions in the past. The involvement of the sheriff is very concerning, health and safety issues, obviously, fire department, dust. The final last straw was blaming Public Works for how bad the road is and how it makes it come in, which just spoke completely that the facility's inadequate for what they want to do there. So my personal preference is to the second version that Brandon talked about. Basically, I feel like we gave a person an opportunity to do some things on this property, and the use and enjoyment hasn't held by those principles. Been an upset to the neighbor, the whole community, our sheriff department at time, 3rd of July, when they have lots of other things to do. I don't find any merit in continuing this, and we've ignored the complaints for a number of years, and I'm not going to anymore. So.
Do you want to make a motion, or do you want to just make your comments first?
I guess I can make my comments if that's appropriate. So there's a lot of facts and a lot of things that were thrown out here, and Brandon, I guess this is a question, and, sorry, Mr. Chair, I should have probably asked this before we started to talk, but was there, was there a conditional use? Was fire suppression equipment on the property part of their permit?
I don't recall. It was a conditional use, so health and safety was taken into account. The agencies that were involved would all provide a notice, and they would have had an opportunity to put that as a condition.
Okay. So I guess my concern is, the reason I brought that up twice is that even if that wasn't a condition, the things that concern me is not the garbage, and I understand the neighbor's concern. You know, the trash cans, the property's getting cleaned up, we got litter. I mean, the litter on the roads around the neighbors, that's a concern, but the garbage cans, all that stuff. You know what concerns me is the public safety issues here. We have, we have three deputies out there, we have three Woodburn police out there, we have a stabbing in a neighbor's yard, and you know what? Those are the kinds of events we don't need to have, where we have people that are getting hurt and that are attacking each other, and, you know, as somebody who's been in the hospitality industry all my life and had to run bars, and I understand the responsibility of the owner or the organizer of those events to control those things, and yes, I understand that we have to call the police once in a while, but this is excessive. And if we had to charge for all that time back to the sheriff's office, and I don't know if you've got a potential, what that bill would be, it's excessive. So that's my point, and I just, you know, I've read the file, I read the file last week. I haven't heard anything today that would change my mind that we've approved this in the past, but I think it's time to say no.
All right, Mr. Chair, let me just add my comments. First of all, we've had a long history of complaints, not just this last 2016, but there have been events prior to this from neighbors, trespassing fights, intoxication, noise. In the most recent events, the applicant was in violation of the hours, in violation of the number of people. We had a number of arrests, and appreciate your testimony. The memo was concerning, but the testimony was even more concerning. Lack of access for emergency vehicles. We had a detailed memo, in addition to the Marion County Sheriff's Office, from the Oregon Liquor Control Commission that spelled out a number of violations and concerns that they had, and that clearly the events were outside of what was put forward to them as what the events would be. I think what troubles me even more is in the testimony of the applicant. Everyone else isn't telling the truth. Everything else is someone else's responsibility. I just think that this group is incapable of managing an event of this size, and for that reason, I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing, we close the public record, and that we move to deny the application for a mass gathering permit and find that the applicant held one in violation of the prior permit and is no longer eligible to receive permits for future events.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing, close the record, and deny and find out the fact, the reason is of prior violation of mass gathering permit and ineligible for any continued. Is that correct? Anything else?
Yep.
All right, then I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes, and thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, our last thing to do here this morning is to read the places we'll be together in this coming week. And apparently, none of us are attending. We had a meeting at the Woodburn Marion County Meeting, Luisas Talkrea, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. Apparently, the sheriff will be able to attend. That's at noon today in Woodburn. On the fourth Thursday, Department of Elec officials meeting, Commissioners Boardroom, fifth floor, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. Monday, the eighth, 8:00 till 3:00, Association of Oregon County Steering Legislative Committees and Board Meeting, Local Government Center, 1201 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. That's followed at 2:30 on Monday by a historic plaque installation at Capitol Mall, 900 Court Street in Salem. I had planned on attending, and I believe the other two commissioners, I won't be able to, but I would have liked to. Tuesday morning, the ninth, the State and Marion County Meeting, 7:30, Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North Third Avenue in Staton. And we have some, well, two things going on at once. I guess we'll be splitting up. And the Association of County Stepping Up Conference, Local Government Center, 1201 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. That's Tuesday, the ninth, 8:00 till 5:00. And then at 5:00 on Tuesday, a reception, legislative reception at the Dahl House, 1313 Mill Street in Salem. And on next Wednesday, our next board meeting at 9:00, and that's here in the Senator Hearing Room, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. All right. There's people left. Did you have something we didn't do, or you just stayed for all the excitement? All right?
It's just so much fun to be here with us.
Is there anything else that anybody would like to bring up this morning?
Well.
Not even stepping out?
I guess, Mr. Chair, for somebody who may have been watching for the first time, I just want to make a point that, you know, we've been very, how do we get to yes and help people do the things that, you know, are, I guess, economic development, quality of life issues, and this is one of those unfortunate circumstances where, yeah, it hasn't been handled appropriately, and for the safety and the well-being of the rest of the people, I think, you know, that's a tough decision, but we have to do those things. And I just want to encourage anybody who wants to apply for a mass gathering permit, we do them. I know there's been several, and they've been very successful, come back every year, and they are able to do that, so.
Right, to even to that extent, we asked if we could have a multi-year kind of permit process where we didn't have to.
Because they're so good.
Because they're so good that we didn't have to review them, so.
Yeah, almost like the OLCC permit, where we just kind of, you know, stamp it, but, yeah.
And then they ignore us, is that what you're saying?
Did they?
Usually.
Did they do?
Yes.
I just have one thing I wanted to say, that you might want to really hear.
You want me to make a motion and go back to public comment? We return to public.
Well, no, that hearing's over and closed.
No, I mean, public comment up here.
And I don't know what topic he's planning to talk about. I'd like to know before we, what topic?
You need to tell us the topic you want to.
Oh, I just wanted to see how much I appreciate the Marion County Sheriff and some of the recent interactions I've had with them.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair, it's okay?
Chair, go.
Make a chair, we return, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, we return to public comment.
That's easy, but go ahead, would you introduce yourself and go ahead and give your statement?
Hi, my name's Sean Nicus, and I'm at 1490 Acacia Drive here in Salem. I recently, along with the ACLU and the People Power Movement, met with the sheriff here in Marion County. I just wanted to see how impressed we were with his professionalism and the quality of that way that he's running his department. Thank you.
Oh, that was easy, and thank you. And we know that, by the way, but thanks for telling the rest. All right, anything else this morning? I know we've got to scatter three different directions if I have this right, so if I hear nothing else, let's call this meeting adjourned.